Ms. Frisereby, if you could start today's meeting, please.
Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, July 1st, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, all please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I would ask all of those, I ask that we remember all those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, and all those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in this chambers. Also, we ask that we receive the, excuse me, proper information and have the wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of June 17th, 2015, and bills for payment on July 3rd and July 10th, 2015. Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
We will now have a presentation. Sister Annette Marshall, can you please come up? I have one coming up over here, I appreciate it. Yes, thank you for being here today, Sister. We have a resolution, Council want to have a commendation to you, so the resolution reads as follows. City Council and the city of Erie wish to pay a special tribute to the Benedictine Sisters of Erie during their 20th anniversary of the Neighborhood Art House. The Benedictine Sisters started the Inner City Neighborhood Art House to provide a safe, nourishing, and caring environment for the children of Erie. Hundreds of children that attend classes free of charge in after-school programs and summer classes enjoying high-quality arts and humanity programs, including painting, photography, crafting, plastering, carving, weaving, dance, and other forms of art. The center offers to children a chance to express themselves creatively and grow academically and socially when they are not at home. The Neighborhood Art House benefits students in our community and can be calculated in their improved personal growth, positive behavior, and creativity. We honor and thank Executive Director Sister Annette Marshall, Program Director Sister Peg Paluski, the thousands of volunteers and the Benedictine Sisters of Erie, and extend our heartfelt thanks and appreciation for enhancing the lives of our inner community through their service and ministry on the 20th anniversary of the Inner City Neighborhood Art House. Thank you so much for being here. If you just want to say a few, oh sure, say a few words, I'd appreciate it. Great, thank you.
First of all, I simply want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for recognizing the Art House. I also want to thank you because a lot of times, all you hear are the complaints. This is wrong, that's wrong. I know you do an awful lot of very soul-searching, difficult work on behalf of the city and for us, for the sisters, for the children at the Art House. I thank you for that. Blessings on you, we appreciate your recognition, and if you're ever in the area of the Art House, stop in anytime, we'd love to show it off. So, thank you.
We will now have a request for repository sales. Are there any requests for repository sales today? Are there any requests for repository sales today? Seeing none, we will go to citizens to be heard. Our first speaker will not be here today, he had signed up for the agenda, Mr. Barnes, so we will go to any citizens to be heard for today. Anyone come to?
My name is Paul Mucey, I live at 111 East 11 at Friendship Towers, and I wanted to mention about, you know, when you mentioned about the summer programs for the kids to make money and that, that I think the school district should get involved in it, too, where they could probably clean inside the schools, you know, the hallways, the lockers, and you know, maybe clean the desks in the classrooms and that, and even cut the grass around the schools and that. And another thing, the mayor's secretary behind the unemployment office, where they leave the grass grows so high, I told the mayor's secretary, when they have the city to cut the grass and the owners don't want to maintain it, that they should put a lien on their property, which they couldn't sell that property until they paid the city back, because if the city's going to maintain them, if the owners don't want to maintain them, I think that would be a good idea. And I want to let you know to let the mayor's secretary know that they did a very good job behind the unemployment office, because that grass is up like this, and they cut it all down. I think yesterday they cut it all down. I think they did a very good job. Thank you very much.
Yes, other speakers to be heard, county executive?
Thank you, council members, thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I appreciate you considering the ordinance to support the application for a national marine sanctuary in the Pennsylvania waters of Lake Erie. The county is looking to put an application in at the end of August. National marine sanctuaries are special places throughout our nation and its territories. There are only 14 national marine sanctuaries and only one in the Great Lakes, and they can protect anything from a species to a physical feature such as a reef or cultural artifacts. And the final category is what we will be putting our designation application in for, and that will be the shipwrecks that are out in the waters of Lake Erie. And I think many of us know that there are many shipwrecks out there, hundreds of shipwrecks, and they are really truly part of our heritage. We are here because of the water, and those shipwrecks in a national marine sanctuary can bring so much to our region. I was up in Alpena, Michigan. Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary is four hours north of Detroit and well over an hour away from an interstate highway. Last year alone, they had almost 100,000 visitors to their small community of Alpena, a city of about 10,000 because of the national marine sanctuary that's there. And of course, we're right on 990, where over 2 million cars pass every year, and we would have that national designation with the full resources of the national government behind that in terms of bringing people into our community. But much more than even the tourism piece is the economic development and the education and research piece. The national marine sanctuaries across the country, but particularly what I saw at Alpena, have embedded themselves in the curriculum through robotics, through the history lessons, and really helping our students to understand why we're here and why these shipwrecks are important for our cultural heritage. But the robotics piece was incredible, because they start robotics at a very young age, kindergarten, first grade, all the way up through the school district, and they go out and they find new wrecks through these remote-operated vehicles, these underwater robotics. So the science and the research that would come to our community, again, with the resources of the federal government, their research ships, their research planes, the other things that they could bring in here, would be tremendous for our region. So I think in terms of the tourism, the education piece, the science and research piece, and then some of the ancillary things that could possibly happen here. And I'll just tell you one story. The hospital up in Alpena has now become the wound center for that part of Michigan, because they have a hyperbaric chamber for the divers that are coming from around the world to dive the ships now off of Alpena and Thunder Bay. And so that piece of equipment, the hospital, has now become the wound center for that area. So the ripple effect of this can be tremendous. So I do appreciate your support of this. I just want to let you know that we have an advisory committee that includes pretty much everyone who uses the water, they are all on board. This will not affect the fishing. In fact, it could enhance the fishing as fishermen find out where these wrecks are, because they make reefs themselves, and that's where a lot of fish hang out. The commercial operations, like for example Carmuse, who owns Erie Sand and Gravel, they work with Alpena's National Marine Sanctuary, and they are perfectly comfortable with this. The Pleasure Boaters, the Science Consortium out of the Ridge Center, the Flagship Niagara, the Maritime Museum, all of those entities that we have, great entities here on our waters, are coming together and saying this is a good thing for our region. And of course, lastly, the divers, the diving world sees a huge opportunity to increase what they do here in the region. So I think for Erie City and for the region as a whole, this is an opportunity that rarely comes around. We would be part of a very elite system of these national marine sanctuaries, and I think that the possibilities for Erie City and the region are really beyond what we can even expect at this point. So thank you for your consideration of the resolution.
Great, thank you for being here, Salk, thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Duffin, did you want to say a few words on this? You're good, okay, just checking. We'll continue with other citizens to be heard for today, and then we will be voting on this as soon as we start the meeting, about the marine sanctuary, but other citizens to be heard for today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michael X. Anderson, I am the Chief Executive Officer for Martin Luther King Arts and Culture Acquisition, which has the acronym MLK ACE, residing in 1917 Camp hausen. I'd like to give you the greetings, Assalamu alaikum, which means peace be on to you. This mug here represents a gift that we gave to every coach who played in this program that we do in January, and we have over 30 teams from 5th and 6th grade all the way up to high school, from Toronto, Cleveland, Buffalo, Pittsburgh, Rochester, Syracuse. And the city was gracious enough to pay for these mugs, and I just wanted to extend simply a thank you, and also give each one of you one, you know, because all of us enjoy our little cup of Java in the morning time. And at the same time, I gave each one of you a poster of the summer youth program that we're doing, in which we have a, we do an indoor, we're in our third year for our indoor basketball league, we're in our second year as far as basketball camps, and first year we're trying to do a youth flag football league for the young people in our community. And for the last two years, the city has also once again been gracious enough to pay for T-shirts for the kids who participate, and this gives you an idea of what they look like. My thing is, is that with so much going on in our community right now, every program, mine's, Mr. Witherspoon's Basketball League, right, is a step in the right direction, nothing else giving our young people something to do. And so I just simply wanted to just come in and just thank you for that, you know, and you may not know that you had invested in it, you know, but my thing is that this is how good politics works, this is how good government works for its citizens. And lastly, about seven days before the community cleanup, I called Councilman Jones about an area between 19th and Camphausen and 19th and Shaw that had over six couches, 10 mattresses, around 30 tires, and the city came in and cleaned that up, and I really appreciated that, you know. And I don't think you guys always get, maybe citizens come in and say thank you for the good that you do. You're always going to hear about the bad, you know, but I just wanted to thank you for that, because I mean, when you look at that every day, you know, people use things that dump in ground, you appreciate good government at work. Thank you very much, have a good day, peace.
Thank you for being here today. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? And last call, are there any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, can we now continue with the rest of the meeting, Ms. Frisereby?
Yes, ordinances for final passage. Council File 15924, official ordinance number 22 of 2015, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $111,728 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2015 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. I am Mr. Kotowski, and seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15924, and now known as Official File Ordinance 22 of 2015, be finally passed by the City Council. Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 22, 2015, finally, by ye seven, nay We'll go on to new business. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
You end up...
I make a motion.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kunso?
Move the balance of the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Do we have any separations?
Shall we separate number one on the marine sanctuary, just to ask questions?
Okay, we'll separate number one, a new business, the proposed national marine sanctuary. No other separations, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving the bailancy of the agenda, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Okay, do we want to read the resolution, then we can have the discussion?
All right. Sponsored by Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mr. Jones, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, whereas the National Marine Sanctuary program was established in 1972 to preserve the extraordinary scenic beauty, biodiversity, historical connections, and economic productivity of the nation's most precious underwater treasures for future generations, and to foster an understanding of our country's maritime heritage and landscape. And whereas the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, Office of National Marine Sanctuary, serves as busy trustee for the network of 14 protected marine sanctuaries encompassing more than 170,000 square miles of marine and Great Lakes waters throughout the nation. And whereas, for the first time in two decades, NOAA has invited communities across the nation to nominate their most treasured places in our marine and Great Lakes waters for consideration as national marine sanctuaries. And whereas, the Pennsylvania waters of Lake Erie, which encompasses 759 square miles, and Presque Isle Bay along Erie County, Pennsylvania, is home to 132 identified shipwrecks, which are a resource with archaeological, historical, and recreational value, and are subject to continuing threats of pillaging by recreational divers, and are vulnerable to exploitation and degradation. And whereas, the City Council of Erie, on behalf of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, has recommended that a 759-square-mile area in the Pennsylvania waters of Lake Erie be nominated for designation by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration as a national marine sanctuary to preserve these historical resources. And whereas, the proposed marine sanctuary contains many types of sunken vessels, including 132 identified shipwrecks, none of which are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas, establishment of the proposed national marine sanctuary will preserve and protect these valuable maritime resources, advance educational programming in the region, interpret the maritime and cultural history of maritime resources, advance educational programming in the region, interpret the maritime and cultural history of the area, and enhance tourism as a key component of economic development for the state and the region. And whereas, no state or local matching funds or ongoing operational support are required to establish, in order to establish, a national marine sanctuary. And whereas, local resources and infrastructure may be used in partnership with NOAA to complement and enhance a national sanctuary. So, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Erie, PA, supports the nomination, designation, and development of the proposed national marine sanctuary in the Pennsylvania waters of Lake Erie, including Presque Isle Bay. Discussion?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well, now discussion, any council members have any comments on this resolution?
Mr. Brennan, I just had a couple of questions.
Ms. Kunso?
If the county executive, could you answer just a couple of questions on process for So what's happening is, this is a nomination that's going to go to NOAA to ask them to designate this area that has been designed here, the Presque Isle. But what is the process in terms of, is it competitive? Is there other people competing, like, and how fast will we find out?
So the process is new, for 20 years it was closed, and it was just opened up last year. So what happened is, we put the application in at the end of August, NOAA then within 60 days will inform us whether we've been put into the inventory. That does not mean we get a designation. So they have already received some applications in this past year that have not been accepted into the inventory, and they've accepted two so far. One up in Lake Michigan from Wisconsin, and the other one, I'm sorry, failed to, it's somewhere at Chesapeake Bay. So those are the two that they've accepted so far. So we would be hopefully accepted into that inventory. Then the process would be from their inventory, looking at who they would want to go forward with on the designation. If they chose the Pennsylvania waters of Lake Erie to go forward with, then it would be a two- to three-year process, where NOAA would come into the community, hold numerous public meetings, continue to work out what this marine sanctuary would be, what the agreement would be with our region, and have lots of community input. NOAA will not come in and designate a national marine sanctuary in our Pennsylvania waters unless our community wants it. And that will be the main criteria that they will determine over that two- to three-year process. Does the community want this or not? And then they would move forward, if we want it, and they believe it's a great site for that, a special place, as they say, in our waters of our country, then they would come forward and have the designation.
Okay. What do you need from City Council besides passage of this resolution? Is there other ways we can support this effort?
Any way that you can support it in the public realm would be terrific, because I think a lot of people don't understand, and they think somehow NOAA is going to take control of our waters, or take control of the lake bed, which they are not. They will have only control over the shipwrecks in the water, and so it will not affect commercial fishing, boating, you know, if we wanted to put wind turbines out there, or anything else that we might want to do in the water. NOAA, unless it would impact the shipwreck. So if somebody wanted to put a wind turbine or the energy line that they're bringing across from Canada, if that was going to go right through a shipwreck, they just have to go around it. So we as a region would still, and the state really has control over the state, the lake bottom anyway, but we as a region would have input into what that agreement would look like with NOAA. And again, it's a process that takes two to three years, but we would know within 60 days from application if we're in the inventory, which is the first step.
Okay, it sounds good. It sounds like a real great opportunity for our community, for education, for preservation, for all, you know, really embracing our maritime history, so.
I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for a region, these things don't come around very often, and when you think about a national park, and this is equivalent to a national park, and what that can do for a region, that's what I see this doing for our region.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you for coming today.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Just, if I could, county executive, good morning. I know you obviously are at this body requesting and going to receive a letter of support for this effort. What other bodies, whether it be county council, county, school districts throughout the county, other municipalities, are they also giving letters of support and recognition for the importance of this endeavor?
Yes, county council should be voting on one in their meeting on July 12th. We are reaching out to every one of the 38 municipalities throughout the county. We particularly want to make sure we have one from everyone that borders the lake. So from Springfield to northeast, we want to make sure we have one from every municipality that borders the lake. And then we certainly are reaching out to school districts and nonprofits and businesses. We already have Don John has given us a lot of support, actually, you know, they're very interested in this, as are many other of the businesses in the region.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
I just want to make a few quick comments. I had done some research on it, of course, been given some information, and I saw just a lot of positive things that would happen if this designation occurred. But not only that, Lake Erie, we always talk about its recreational value, but you're trying to take advantage of the historical value and the educational value, to me, it makes a lot of sense. And anything we can do to strengthen and protect, you know, this huge asset that we have with Lake Erie, I think is going to be a great thing to do, so that's my comment, thank you. Ms. Frisereby, do we want to continue hearing no other comments with this resolution vote?
Yes, roll call. Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Pass is 720.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kunso. Mr. Kotowski, committee report?
While we don't have a really committee report today, I'd just like to offer my condolences to the family of longtime educator, longtime, my track coach, my mentor, my counselor from tech, Mr. Ray Dombrowski, who was a proud representative of the school district, but also a great person, one who realized that many of us who've gone to tech were never going to make a living with our hands, and many of us went on to college because of him. But he was a great leader, a great track coach, taught this young man quite a bit way back then, so I'd like to offer his family condolences on behalf of the Erie community, and I'll have my report next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kotowski, Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, no committee reports this morning, just once again asking the citizens to be patient with our streets department, as well as our contractors, with our paving, with the weather, the way it's been, they're trying to get more done in little time, so I know some of these roads get a little rough after they mill them, and they're trying to get this done in a short amount of time, just like I said, fighting the weather, but hopefully the sun is coming this weekend. Enjoy the Fourth, and have a good weekend, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our finance meeting that we would normally have after this meeting, we're going to postpone until next month. We have a few items that are kind of in the process, and we don't have all the information for valid discussion, so we're going to postpone our meeting, or cancel this meeting and pick up our next finance meeting on the first meeting, or the first week of next month. Excuse me. Also, again, as Mr. Winarski said, I just want to say happy Fourth of July to the community, enjoy your family, enjoy. When I was coming up as a youngster, McDonald's used to talk about food, folks, and fun, and a lot of times, we don't take time to enjoy food, folks, and fun, and so let's do that over this next few days and over this weekend. Also, I didn't mention it in my comments during, or just before, our prayer and meditation time, but let us remember, of course, as I always say, everyone in this country, everyone throughout the world in prayer and in time of meditation, but in this country, down south, South Carolina, I have some very good friends and family that are experiencing some very challenging times in South Carolina. There's race issues, there's some attitude issues. You know, at the end of the day, we don't like to have these kinds of conversations because we always get emotional, and you know, we have differences of opinion about certain perspectives, uncertain topics, I should say. But at the end of the day, we're all human, we're all respectfully the children of God, however you look at it, or however you want to say that, and we have more alike than we have unalike. And so, you know, the greatest thing we can do is love one another, and so at the end of the day, let's just keep our thoughts and energy, not just towards South Carolina and the southern part of this country, but through every part of the world, allow the love of humanity, the love of people, even though we disagree on a lot of things. Let the human piece and the love piece have preeminence in our conversations and in our interactions, and that translates all the way back up here to northwestern Pennsylvania and Erie. So don't have a traditional report, maybe a slight sermonette, if you would, but it's very important. Enjoy food, folks, and fun, and fellowship with your families and loved ones this weekend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Kunso?
Mrs. Kuntso?
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Just a couple of things to report on. I did get a report from the redevelopment authority to kind of get up to date on what they're working on. Couple of things of interest that, starting in July, well, today is July, so they will have some emergency repair funds available to people who are low to moderate income and in our CDBG target area, and who have some emergency repairs needed on their homes. So, you can contact the authority if you, if you have a desperate need of emergency repairs. Also, they're working with, continuing to work on the issues regarding the sale of properties to continue on the Union Square project, and working on form, the forming of the land bank, which we've been talking about for a while, and how that would help to expedite the blight removal process. We've talked about that sort of in broader range, sort of a regional effort to try to look for, forming the land bank, so there'd be an entity who could help with the disposition of blighted properties in our region. So, they continue to be making efforts in those areas, also doing some partnering with the county to provide some redevelopment efforts in the county. So, I look forward to continuing to meet with them and hear about other projects they have in the pipeline. Just a couple other things just to mention. I have been taking note of the lawn maintenance in both the city and the school buildings. And I just, not to kind of do, what is it, a sermonette? That Mr. Jones said, but, you know, we have an obligation as the city government, and also the school district, that own properties in the city, that our properties need to look and set the tone for how we expect our citizens to maintain their properties. So, when we cut the grass at our properties, and blow the grass clippings into the street, and run over the garbage, and blow that into the street, and onto the sidewalk, on this clearly city-owned properties, it is pretty bad role modeling that we are doing for our citizens. So, we have sort of an obligation, and the school district as well. People shouldn't have to contact the school district and ask them to cut the grass that is ten inches tall, because they haven't had it on a rotation yet. We have a huge expectation that we want our city, at least in City Hall, we want our city to be the best place to live and raise our families. But if we're not even setting standards for our own properties, we're not being good role models. And so, I hate to go on a sermonette, but it's really getting on my last nerve. If I drive by, and there's city park, a city boulevard, or city school, that's grass is high, and the grass is blown, and the garbage is all over, what do we expect our citizens to do with their properties if we can't do it ourselves? So, a sort of...
Full sermon.
Full sermon. I'm getting really tired of it. So, please, could we at least show our own house? I do want some water, I want some coffee. So, anyway, so anyway, that's my soapbox for the moment. The other soapbox issue is Pennelec used to do something for me, and the fellow there, she's sometimes a representative here, but the building on East Thirty-Eighth that says Pennelec, it's some sort of a facility, brick facility on East Thirty-Eighth, you'll know where it is. Substation is covered in graffiti. It is your responsibility, Pennelec, it is your building to clean it, and it is detrimental to the neighborhood, so please clean your building. And I have six months left on council, so hopefully we won't have too many more of these sermons, but I might. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuntso. Mr. Mersky?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
Just to answer, Councilwoman, I will take care of the Pennelec issue for you.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
As a retiree.
You are, you are very responsive. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Mersky?
Just a few things to report on. I attended the Neighborhood Watch Council yesterday. You know, one of the things that was brought up at the meeting from our police department is, when you watch Facebook and Twitter, and you see the unblock Erie Alerts and Erie Alerts, one of the things that was mentioned is, you see all these reports for shots fired. And what happens is, it's one call, and then fifteen people put on the internet that there were shots fired. And of course, you hear it in a large radius. So, it looks like on the internet, there were fifteen shots fired in various areas around the city, when in actuality, there was one firecracker, and then when the police investigate it, there are no bullets, there are nothing. And not to say that we don't have shots fired, but that was an interesting thing, and the police officer estimated that about half of the calls for shots fired are, end up unfounded being fireworks, or they can't find shell casings, or no witnesses. So, just to keep that in mind, if you're one of those internet watchers of the crime in town, that don't believe everything you read, because some of it is, they don't follow up with the callback that says, "No, it was a firework." And so, that's, that was one of the takeaways from Neighborhood Watch Council. Also, I attended the Pennsylvania League of Cities in Allentown. Allentown is a beautiful city, it's about the size of Erie, and they're in the midst of major renovations, and over a hundred mil, yeah, one hundred million dollars in investment, new, new arena, and stabilizing their downtown through a unique process called the Neighborhood Improvement Zone. Of course, with the state, what they do is, they find something good, and then they say no one else can do it. But, so we, we got to see what they were doing, but we did get some ideas on how to improve our city, using some of the tricks that Allentown used, and some of the techniques that Allentown used. Couple of the things that I went to were integrating high-speed internet into your community, and budgeting and revenue workshops. So, those, those were good workshops that I can take away and use here. From Public Works, just a couple of things to report. We voted on, it was in the balance of the agenda, one point two million dollars in additional paving and mandated curb cuts today. So, as our guys are working out there, there's one point two million dollars going out today as of, as of our vote. Also, I took my dog up to the dog park, and I wanted to just thank Councilman Brennan for helping write that grant to the Perry Wood and the Gaming Authority, because it really is a nice facility. Ms. Beck, just a couple of things. If we could get some dog bags up there, there are some, what happens is, people bring their dogs, and then don't have anything to, they forget to bring a bag. And so, there's some of that. And then, as it finishes up, I'm sure that we'll get some restroom facilities up there for the people as well. No, not for the dogs, for the people. And finally, just a final thing to report, we have a study session tomorrow, Parking Authority. I think it's really, it's time to modernize our parking, and that's, that's the takeaway, that, the message I'm going to bring to the Parking Authority tomorrow. In this day and age, we're using nineteen-fifties technology in our parking meters, and Kaz and I've talked about this many times, that you go to other cities, and you can use a debit card, or you can use your cellphone to pay for your parking. People in my generation don't carry quarters on them that often, they just don't carry change. And so, it's time to modernize, and I look forward to that study session tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to report that we had a biddy basketball camp the last week of June. This is for six and seven-year-olds, and a few eight and nines. We had a good turnout, we worked directly with the Erie Housing Authority. All the kids received a trophy, and some kids receive additional trophies because of the challenges, or the special skill challenges. Agility drill, stepping through ladders, the speed, going through cones, zigzagging, dribbling, layups. And the nephew of Councilman Jones walked away with all the special awards. This young man, Mike's son.
Like his uncle.
Yeah.
Like his uncle.
Mike's uncle, yeah, well, he didn't, he didn't pass the ball at all this way.
No surprise, Erie.
Yeah. That runs in the family. He didn't get the assists award, though. But a tough young man, he's going to be something to reckon with. He loves the game, and he did an outstanding job. The mayor was out of town, he couldn't make it. Police chief did a ten, he spoke to the kids. Mr. John Heran, a ten, and he addressed the kids as well. The chief talked about, a little bit about the crime, kids asked him some questions. He did an outstanding job. John Heran, they found out who he was, because most of them lived in there. They asked him, "Well, do you know who this is?" "No, is he the boss?" "Well, yeah, he the boss." "Boss of what?" "I don't know." But when, when the day was over, they all had a good time. Parents came out and supported. So, we had a real good time, two hours a day, five days, and we thanked the city and the Housing Authority for providing that at no cost to the kids. I'd like to send something out to the Dembrowski family. Ray Dembrowski passed, was at his viewing last night, and he was a mentor to me, a coach, an educator, PhD, you name it, referee, one outstanding gentleman. And my prayers go out to his family. And I ran into Mr. Randy Barnes last night, and he told me he wouldn't be here today, and I said, "You mind if I mention it?" He said, "By all means." But I'll tell you, there's two Randy Barnes. There's a different Randy Barnes when he's not at this mic. And so, when he comes to the mic, from this point forward, I'm going to picture the Randy Barnes that's not at the mic. Because he's a very nice gentleman. And it's good to be able to do what you think is right, and then be yourself somewhere else. So, I welcome Mr. Barnes for the duration of whatever the duration will be. And I got to meet his wife, she's a nice lady as well. The basketball league begins on the sixth. We have two hundred and thirty-one young men registered. Our registration for the young ladies are down this year, but we're leaving spots open for them. We have three teams, and we're looking for another team for the young ladies. We went through a draft mode, we had a combine, the coaches looked at them, we drafted the young men. The, we had a hundred and forty-one in the age group of eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. We have eight teams in that age group. We have six teams in the fifteen, sixteen, and six teams in the nine and ten. We're just hoping that the weather will work with us. In the meantime, I'm going to work with the school district. In case of rainouts, we can utilize one of the gyms, preferably central, because they have two gyms there, and we do utilize two courts. Hopefully, we can make that work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Ms. Tenkemich, do we have any report today? No report today? Administration report today, Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a member of the administration, I also had an opportunity to attend the Pennsylvania Municipal League in Allentown. Many great breakout sessions, keynote speakers. They put on a first-class event for all of us, and certainly were happy to showcase their city and what a hundred million dollars can do. Again, the news, I don't think it's going to be available for any communities across the rest of the Commonwealth, but we certainly wait for CRIS announcements and RCAP funding, hopefully, once the state budget is passed soon. Sound of Summer was only rained out once, believe it or not. This coming Jan, July sixth, we will be at the Soldiers and Sailors Home. It's a great facility, the Gem City Concert Band will be under the gazebo, and they're going to be doing a patriotic theme. So, again, I invite everyone out to Soldiers and Sailors Home to thank some of our veterans for their service, and, and enjoy, hopefully, what'll be a lovely evening in the city of Erie. Perry Square is coming along, as you can see. We're on the shore, we'll be down here in two weeks in July, starting on the fifteenth, I believe, is, is the first evening of that. So, we're working to, to get as much of Perry Square done as possible, and hopefully, it will be done completely by the time Celebrate Erie rolls around. Everyone have a nice holiday weekend, and again, enjoy the time with their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. I do have a few items to talk about here. I attended the Bayfront Parkway Study, their public input meeting, it was out last week. The meeting was held to get input on the potential improvements that are under discussion. Penned out, along with their consultant, McCormick Taylor, hosted the meeting. The improvements are trying to address several things, the traffic flow, pedestrian safety, as well as bike, bike safety, and then the future developments that are going on down there, including the hotels and other, other improvements with walkways, and, and other, other things that are happening. So, it's, it's looking forward to, looking at that possible congestion, or possible ways to make it, make it safer for everyone. Also being looked at is the potential funding scenarios for, for the work that's being planned. And also, lastly, the, the study's going to be completed in September, so we should be hearing more about what they've gathered from the public input at the, at those meetings. Also, I wanted to thank again Sister Net Marshall for being here today from the Benedictine Sisters of Erie with the Art House. I mean, they've been around for quite a long time, as, as you can see, for twenty years. And actually, going back, I mean, I was actually involved in the original renovation of it. It was a auto repair shop, and back in nineteen ninety-five, they renovated it to, to become the Art House. So, it's definitely been a long time. They've been doing a lot of great work there. If anyone hasn't been through their facilities, please take a tour, they're doing some incredible, incredible work there. And lastly, the, I attended the Erie Neighborhood Watch Council Advisory Board meeting. Again, they continue to work on sharing resources, sharing knowledge of all the different groups. There's many efforts and initiatives that are underway. They try to keep their website going, but they're really need to, they're doing some improvements now. And they're also working on a, a map, there's an existing map that's out there that notates all the neighborhood watches and associations. And now, they can, they're going to continue to update that and make it more, more informative as we go forward. But I think that's a, a good thing to be able to note where the associations are, where the neighborhood groups are. So, if you move into a neighborhood, or you have any questions, that you have a, a resource to, to go to. And with that, that'll conclude this morning's meetings. Thank you, everyone for being here.
City Council adjourns at nine fifty-one. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.